Good morning. It's February 25, 2015. It is now 10:01, and we will start our county commission meeting. First call to order, Commissioner Callen is not here. He's down in Charleston. Commissioner Hawkins?
Present.
And Commissioner Blum is here. We will have asked to stand for a moment to silence and pledge the flag, and also ask that we respect and understand the concerns that are going on at University High and the student who lost his life. Thank you.
Thank you. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. We will now have consent and approval.
There are no exonerations today.
Yay.
We have orders, fiduciary orders as of February 25, and state new services for fiduciary Commissioner Armstead and Ms. Stafford minutes of February 11. For vouchers, general county fund, $52,009.1716, general county purchasing card, $2,039.99, Cool Severance Fund, $53,003.2255, Chestnut Ridge Park, $3,026.374, Mason Dixon, $16.89. Assessor's valuation fund, $8,087.90, magistrate court fund, $114.14, non-loyal cash, $254. Law enforcement forfeiture, $2,007.0999, mortgage and industrial tip, $19,996.54, trellis of $142,822.99. Now we have budget revisions for sheriff's office, civil process, sheriff's office, law enforcement, and can't not play.
Motion to approve.
Second, all those in favor say aye. Aye. All those opposed, passes. Okay, we will now have comments from the public, and seeing that there's so many people here, anyone who would like to speak, please state your name and address and stand up and Seeing none, we'll have the public. Okay, we're now on grants. Lynetta, how are we doing today?
Great, how are you?
Going to be better if we get more grants.
Yes.
Good.
Well, first I have one reimbursement resolution, no, I'm sorry, reimbursement request for the emergency solutions grant, month of January, $6,829.25.
Okay.
It's the only item like that today.
Do we need a motion?
Yes.
So do.
Second, properly move in second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
The passes.
About six weeks ago, we applied for records preservation grant for three different offices, prosecuting attorney, sheriff, and county clerk. We've received a letter from the West Virginia Archives and History, and those have been approved, not at the full amount, at a reduced amount. Prosecuting attorney is $5,868. The sheriff is $2563, and the county clerk is $10,000. I have a letter here from the commission just approving the funds that we're going to get, and then with our intent to pursue the projects. So I just asked for the president's signature on that.
Motion to approve, the president signs.
Second, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay, we're already at number six. We're halfway done. Correspondents.
I just have one letter from the Route 2 I-68 authority, and this is due to the resignation of Don Reiki from the authority. There's now a vacancy on the authority from the county commission. Holly Childs is replacing Don Reiki. She's coming in this afternoon for, just to meet you, and I spoke with Commissioner Callen about this. He's on the development authority and asked that we're not able to make an appointment after speaking with Holly this afternoon. So there's action on this at this time.
Okay, thank you. Any other correspondents?
No.
Unfinished business, recycling, our favorite issue right now. I have heard that you received a letter.
I did.
Would you like to read the letter?
Email this to me from the solid waste authority to the county commission, future recycling program in Mont County commissioners. The Montague County Solid Waste Authority feels strongly about providing recycling to the county residents and encourages the county commissioners' efforts to continue our recycling program. This memo is to provide a clear and concise answer to the Montague County Commission's concerns about the solid waste authority's intentions with regards to the future of recycling program in Mont County. Solid Waste Authority considered providing a source separated recycling program. That has been provided and successful in the past to maximize the volume of recyclable materials for renewable waste stream for a healthy and clean environment for the citizens. However, we understand that several entities within the county have decided to go to a different route by using single stream recycling, which will not produce enough volume to maintain a self-sufficient program. Conscientiously, since we know the infrastructure of a new processing facility, and with operating and managing it would be costly, we cannot in good faith establish a new facility that would be sustainable. Further along, the solid waste authority does not feel that single stream recycling is the most economically viable way to reduce the overall solid waste stream by removing all recyclable materials from going into the landfill. That being said, under West Virginia Code 22(c)(4), we are mandated to uphold certain duties as a solid waste authority. For this reason, if the Montague County Commission decides to implement a single stream recycling program, we will work with you within our guidelines to implement this program. We unfortunately have very limited experience with this type of program and are not in position to manage or run it. We can provide our oversight, knowledge, and help with promoting and encouraging source reduction, reuse of recycling activities to the citizens of that program. Since the solid waste authority does not intend to set up a new processing facility for source separated recycling, we do intend to elicit our commitment to generate funds to use in supporting and promoting future recycling endeavors. The West Virginia Ethics Commission will provide validation on what is available and approve these funds to be spent. Prior to any of our being sold, we were clarified that they were purchased solely with solid waste authority funds. We are waiting to hear back from the West Virginia Solid Waste Management Board with their response on the proper guidelines for purchasing and spending. When this occurs, we will begin the validation process of our processing equipment. Regards, Tony DeBaron, recycling coordinator, and Harry Homick, chairman of the board.
Did you want to make any comments earlier?
No.
Unfortunately. Okay, well, let's talk the positive issue. I have before me, and I will hand out. If you want to hand out to the media, this is fine. There are 136 people that came during the snowstorm, and I do want to thank everyone who did come during the snowstorm. Most appreciative. And as you can see, what we're trying to do is collect data for what we thought would be good to use for whoever's going to be running the program after July 1. And the majority of the people were from the Cheat Lake area, and the other not listed. The two major areas were North Hills and also the Grafton-Gosham Road. So we were real pleased with the amount of people that did show up. There clearly is an interest, and as we said, we went through three 30-yard roll-off bins were completely filled during that time. We're very pleased that Walmart has been vital in ensuring the success of this program. I do want to congratulate them and thank them for allowing us to lead the program. At that time, we also had residents who were interested in volunteering for future recycling days, and we had three people who were interested in doing that, and, you know, that is the very good news. I mean, what we are planning to do, that this commission has agreed to, is fund the program on the first and the third Saturdays continually till July 1. I'm a little surprised and extremely disappointed in the letter that we have just received, and I'll explain why. While we were there, Dr. Bob McConnell came by and was extremely positive in our program, really felt that this would be a good program to start with. And in fact, if I remember correctly, both he and Dave Custer, when they were here, recommended a single drop-off point to work from recyclables, and we'd go from there. After seeing the letter that we've just got, it's apparent that the majority of the members have decided to not work, well, the, let's see, the majority of the members decided not to continue with this program. They would only promote it as, what was the words they used, to promote and support the program, but they wouldn't in any way involve running it, which then puts a dilemma because the county commission is not in the recycling business. We should not be in the recycling business. We need to fund the program that will be successful for this county, and I really thought our two members were very adamant that they liked the program and were going to go with it. So it puts us in a unique situation right now. I'm not sure how we're going to resolve it, and I'm sure what we'll have to do is put it on a work session to discuss it. I would hope that the five members would actually show up. I do want it known that we did send a letter to the three board members requesting that if they wanted to work with us, we still wanted to work with them. However, if they chose not to and felt they could not, then they should resign and turn in their resignation, and we would ask for new members to be selected. So that is part of the record, and I want that known. I'm not sure where we are at that time, because that letter doesn't really respond in any way. I do want to say this, though. It is very frustrating, though, that one of the board members had made it very clear to the three of us that they would do whatever they could to undermine the program. So I have some real concerns about the direction and how we're going to work together. Dr. Hawkins, I don't know if you want to add anything at this time. It's just, it's put in limbo now, a program that I thought was going to be successful, and I wanted, and I think the other commissioners wanted to put funds in for a recycling line item. I don't know how and who's going to run that. So that's going to be one of our big concerns, if you want to add anything.
My concern is that, you know, it would not be proper to comment since this has just came to me today.
Correct.
So I would, however, suggest that since we filled up, or you filled up, three of, that we might want to approach four, due to the inclement weather. If you manage to fill three bins, I think four would be appropriate, but at least collect as much as we can right now, and I'll be commenting further with Republic's statement.
Oh, good. Yes, in fact, I'm glad you said that. Jambi and I talked. We've requested four bins, and we're going to rotate it, and hopefully this time they won't get stuck on the hill that they did before. But we are going to, I mean, if we end up five or six, that is fine. This will give us a better idea of how much money and funds we're going to have to put in the program. However, I revert back to what Eldon said to me, and I agree. I do not want to be in the recycling business. I'm not good at it. It's not our expertise, and I was hoping that the solid waste authority would help us with this endeavor, and it appears that we may have some difficulty. But we will decide that at a future work session, so we'll do that. And I think that's all we'll say at this time. Okay?
Are you going to continue to have just the one drop-off point at Hornbeck?
Yes, right now, we will have on the first and third Saturdays from 7:00 a.m. to 11:00 a.m. We will have as much as people want to drop off. We still also have at Westover from 7:00 o'clock to 3:30 every day. And even though we have the old bins there, people think they have to separate them. No, they don't. They have single recycling there. So those are the two avenues right now until July 1. Yes, go ahead.
Are you going to use the numbers or whatever information you glean from how much recycling is turned in, especially on the weekend times, to determine how much you're going to need in the future? Because I'm betting that some people are just not recycling.
That's a good point. I think one of our goals, when Jambi and I and Bob McConnell, we were talking, we were considering streamlining it so that we would probably do every weekend. We would put money in for every weekend, and we were also considering, since the majority was coming from Cheat Lake, maybe one of those Saturdays would be out in a Cheat Lake area. And so that's-
Where it was, like across the park?
Or, yeah, if we'd be allowed to put it there. Or another request was out by the church, because we wouldn't be leaving the bins. There's a lot of room that people could come in, drop it off, and we could take it off. So that's one of the other items, and that's what we'll be discussing in the work session. I believe that the three county commissioners realize that we want to have recycling. We're going to put money in the budget for next year to have a successful recycling program. The problem is, who is going to run that program? And that's what we're going to have to work out. Any other questions, anyone has? Yes, go ahead.
Wasn't there another volunteer group, wasn't there another group that helped with the recycling other than the solid waste authority?
Not solid waste, not another group.
No, but one of the recommendations we had, again, and this is the problem when we don't have a quorum, we had the recommendation of an ad hoc group, and we have people wanting to get involved. That's why when you only have two members coming to our meetings, and we discuss for two hours, and then those ideas are not being considered, we have a problem. And that's my frustration. Okay, thank you very much. Okay, but we're going to work it out. We're going to come up with a program. We just have to figure out who's going to run it and how we're going to do that. And that, hopefully, we have several months to figure out. Thank you. Under new business, do we have any new business? No. Okay. Reports from elected officials. Did anyone want to speak from elected officials? I did request a report, and I see that the sheriff and Ms. Palmer, who would like to, you'll see what the report is.
I guess I'll do it, because Kelly said she wanted to-
She's quiet, yeah. She doesn't want to get in front of the cameras.
As you know, you requested some accounting numbers for our concealed weapons account in light of the new, well, not new law, but in light of the Senate Judiciary Committee sending out their committee to the Senate floor, Senate Bill 347, which deals directly with basically canceling all aspects of the concealed weapons permitting process, with the exception of people that want to carry in a reciprocal state, then they would still go through the permitting process. Or if they were to purchase a weapon from a federal firearms license dealer, then they would have to go through the process of background investigation as is done now. There, I don't know if anybody heard me yesterday, I was on the Moretonian Talk Show, myself and our executive director of the West Virginia Sheriff's Association, talking about these issues. And you may or may not know, but in this session of the legislature, there have been eight different bills, both from the House and Senate, that have been entered dealing with concealed weapons. And this is the one that's most important to counties, because it directly involves our office. So what we came up with, and Kelly put these numbers together from the tax office, because they do all the receipting of the money that we take in related to concealed weapons. And as you'll see, this is for a five-year period, and in five years, what the sheriff's office has taken in alone is $305,898. Of that, courthouse facilities improvement fund gets a portion of that, and the state police get a $25 fee from that for keeping the register on concealed weapons. Courthouse facilities improvement fund has received out of that $305,000, $67,095, and the state police have received $93,430 over that five-year period, for a grand total There were some comments made about, and I got an email yesterday or last night from the West Virginia Citizens Defense League, and which stated in there that, and you hear a lot of rhetoric whenever something happens that's controversial. And there was a statement in there that I took especially offensive that said that the only reason that the Sheriff's Association and the sheriffs of the state, or some of the sheriffs of the state, were upset about this bill was that it directly affected their wallets. I don't see a penny of this money. This money is put back into programs that we run through the sheriff's office, the portion that we get, because the concealed weapons fund is at, spin at the discretion of the sheriff, although we have guidelines that we have to follow through the auditor's office. So I took offense to that statement. I take offense to a few other statements that, you know, it's just being done because we don't want people carrying guns concealed. In all that, we can argue all day long. I guess it's like talking about taxes and religion, you can argue it all day long. But the bottom line is, what our position is, West Virginia Sheriff's Association and my position is, that we're looking at this from a safety standpoint. The analogy that I used yesterday was that we don't give 15- or 16-year-olds a driver's license to operate a 4,000-pound vehicle on our state highways without some formal training, without some time period that they have to be with a licensed driver to learn how to do it properly, and then they take the time under their learner's permit to learn how to drive. And we just don't put people out in dangerous situations, and we hope we don't. This, to me, is telling everybody that wants to carry a gun concealed, that for 21 years of age or older, you don't have to have any training, you don't have to go through any background check, you don't have to go through any permitting process, but you can carry it anywhere you want to and with no training at all. And the thing that scares me the most is, when you talk about officer safety on traffic stops on highways, responding to somebody's home on calls, people that carry, and we see this all the time downtown, we see incidents happen all the time at bars. People are drinking, they're carrying weapons into bars, and then what happens? Somebody gets in an argument, they go outside the bar, and the first thing they resort to is shooting each other. This isn't the Wild West, and I know these statements are just mine. This isn't the Wild West. I don't want to see it get that way. And I say that in a way that I understand that there are people in all of our communities that are very, very capable of handling firearms. And again, that's not what we're talking about. We're talking about the people that have absolutely no training about handling firearms, how they might overreact in situations that people with training wouldn't overreact. And that's the bottom line for me. The part about the funding, yes, is it going to be very impactful? Obviously, it is. You see the numbers. Out of these things, the things that we've done out of this account, over the past five years, we've bought six patrol vehicles out of here. The commission has always, every year, always bought new vehicles for us. We put a lot of miles on vehicles, and those miles are handling calls for service, going on trips that we're required to do by code. So we put a lot of miles on cars, and we have, the county is 365 square miles. It's a lot of area to cover. So yes, we put a lot of miles on those cars, but what we've been willing to do, because the commission's worked so well with me and with our department, that we purchased six vehicles out of this concealed weapons account. We've also purchased the two operating systems, programs, and computer systems that run this program, out of this, for the upkeep, the identification cards, anything associated with software and hardware to operate the concealed weapons program comes out of this So there are a lot of things that we do with this that enhance not only the program as it's being run, but enhance the services that we provide to the citizens of the county. So that's the point that I was hoping to make today, and I think you can see by the numbers, if this funding is completely cut out by this bill and it's enacted into law, some of those things that we're doing now, we're just not going to be able to do. And we always hear from our state legislators and state government that we don't have the funding, we don't have the funding. Well, here was a source that we use for very vital things that we need in this county, as well as other counties, that use this money for some of the very similar things that I just said, that are going to lose that funding. So it just doesn't make any sense to me.
Did you want to respond?
Just for the record, I would like to say that I totally agree with and support your statement. I will do everything in my power to contact our legislators relative to this.
I appreciate the report. Once we had, I was informed by Kelly Palmer, the consequence, and I asked her to do the report, and I do appreciate you and Kelly putting that together. My concern is sometimes when we send legislators down, especially new members, that there are unintended consequences to certain bills, and this is clearly a problem. Half a million dollars that we're going to lose in five years, let alone $86,000 this past year and $130,000 the year before, is an enormous amount of money, plus the safety. So what I would like to do, since we have new members and it's still in the House and it's still being debated, I want to know if it would be out of line, if, Dr. Hawkins, if we would just send a letter voicing our concern of the two basic areas being due to safety reasons and to the loss of revenue, and we agree with the sheriff, that they please look at this before they, or and consider this before they vote, if you would make-
I would be happy to make a motion to that concern, yes.
And I'll second that. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Good. And that way, we can send a letter. I would also ask that you also would send a letter to the House of delegate members. I believe sometimes, you know, and it's very important, because I think the key we're trying to say now is, whether it's a party issue or not, this is a Montague County issue, and we would like them at least know where we stand. So I appreciate you bringing this up. I think it's important for the community to also understand that. With the direction that's been happening downtown, the last thing we want to do is have a person who has been drinking also now have a weapon. That is not a good mix. So I thank you for bringing that up. Yeah?
Senate Bill is 347, and I think the House Bill is 2145.
Yeah, we can find, yeah.
But I think it's 2145, is the House Bill. I know that the Senate Judiciary has already sent out their committee to the floor.
Okay, yeah. And I know Bob Beach is not for it. I believe he had shown some concerns, but I'll have to find out. But the House members, there was no saying of who was for it and who was against it at this time. And Eldon Callen is also down. That's one of the reasons why he's down there. The other reason he is down there is about the 5% that the legislature, again, wants to take away from the 911 centers, which would do also devastating numbers that would hurt this county. So I know that's why he's here. That's why he's not here right now. Are there any other elected officials who would like to speak? Okay, are there any?
I'll give my report this time.
Well, we still have department supervisors, yeah. Are there any department supervisors that would like to speak? Jambi, you have?
Mr. Hungers is still?
Okay, no one else? Okay, good, we're moving on. Okay, reports from the county commissioners. Dr. Hawkins?
I do have, the first report I was charged with was to ask to identify with regard to Republic's services. And so I did send, first of all, a text message asking for their statement. Their statement was one that I'll read. It's the same statement that was basically printed in the paper. In December, we submitted a Rule 42a application to the West Virginia Public Service Commission. The application proposes new residential and commercial rates in five certificate areas, including Harrison, Lewis, Marion, Montague, Taylor, and Upshur County. The application process requires the applicant to provide justification for any new rate proposal. We have not increased rates in the five certificate areas for more than 10 years. In that time, we introduced all-in-one recycling, built a new transfer station that allowed for reduced diesel fuel consumption and fewer trucks operating on local roads, and brought electronic waste services to customers in these areas. At the same time, we have and continue to incur increased costs in every facet of our operation, from wages to fuel and from tires to taxes. Waste and recycling services are part of the essential infrastructure that enables society to function each day. We are incredibly proud of our history in West Virginia, and we look forward to working with the Public Service Commission, as well as the communities we serve as we go through this application process. My direct question after that was thanking them, this is to their representative, Russ Naki. Russ, thank you for your response. However, there is no recycling address of the rural areas in which the rate hike is proposed. It might be helpful to have consideration of improvement to justify, of services to justify such a dramatic increase. Thank you. That received no response. Now, in this, and this is part of the English major in me, the way I read this, that the justification includes they're introducing all-in-one recycling, which means that the residents that are rural in this county are asked to be subsidized that of what's going on in the city, because there's no rate proposed for the city of the town, no rate increase. So I can make a request of the Public Service Commission, if you wish to go that far.
I don't think-
I don't know that it's going to be any benefit, but-
Right. No, I appreciate your report, and I think you also brought up a really good point about not only- point about, not only are they going to 1-1, but we are also paying them
Yes.
Thousands of dollars for recycling. So, not only are they going to it, but we're paying them, and now we're going to pay them twice for the, yeah, so that's a very good point.
Now, with that being said, I did make an error. I'd like to correct it. The ham bacon and egg sale is March 27th, not February 27th, which is Friday. So, that was an error there. Always admit your errors. Empty bowls will be, of course, 11:00 a.m. at Mylan Park. I'd like to see everybody there. I will be there. And then, I would like to invite, again, everybody to come to the Star City Marina for the Polar Plunge. The contest begins at, I believe, 1:30, and the plunge is at 2:00. Now, much like the Corso, and I'm sorry, Eldon isn't here to see this.
This is, we get out the
I shout here as Sven. The rest of my outfit will be complete. Now, you have your levity, Eldon.
And he missed, but he'll be able to watch it on tape.
He missed the levity.
Yeah.
Come join me, please.
Thank you very much. Just two items. I just want to read a letter from Operation Welcome Home. Dear Commissioner Bloom, Operation Welcome Home supports and welcomes the addition of a bus route to serve our site at Mylan Park and the Vet Center. Transportation is often a challenge for our veterans, and we know that anything that's strengthened public transportation will help. Thank you for your leadership in this matter. And the reason why I asked for that letter is, in our discussion, which will be the second part of my comments of budget process, we were looking to run a bus route, not only to the baseball games, but also to Mylan Park, and we want to set something up. And I had asked for a cost analysis of how much it would cost to do that, and then we would consider that with the other two commissioners for a bus route and the cost per year. So, that is something we're going to look at. And I believe the three commissioners want this, and I think it's something we're going to, I mean, I think it's being progressive rather than waiting till after the fact and trying to get the people to go out there.
Pursuant to that
Sure.
We had a meeting, a lunch meeting, which I went to.
Oh, that's right.
And they are beginning the process of evaluation. In other words, this will be a six-month study that Mountain is now proposing, and that is the last part of the proposal is to include this area at Mylan Park.
Fantastic. And I'm real excited that we're being progressive. The second thing is, the commissioners have requested that we set up some times for budget process, and we want to do something a little bit different. And if I could ask Diane, we have set it up so the public knows how our budget process is going and the times we have set up for that, so that, I mean, this year, we're going to do a little bit different. I think all three commissioners have all the reports. We've been going through it. I'm amazed, and I want to congratulate Diane Renetta for what they do, because it is enormous, the amount of requests and what we have to go through.
And the reports were much better than the others that I reviewed last year.
Yes. So, I think, yeah, and I think we, yeah, I think we started streamlining that. And if I'm correct, we have set up, if you want to just explain the process.
Well, you can have my word with me here.
Whoops.
We didn't talk about it in work session, okay?
Oh, okay.
I know you might not want to discuss this, but if you decide to raise the levy rate, you have to have a public hearing. If it goes never 1%, there has to be two ads in the paper. So, in order to determine that, probably next week, you're going to have to set a public hearing, so I can advertise it, and we can get that rate in the budget on the 18th of March. And because the budget will be due the next Wednesday. You have to approve it on the 25th, unless you want to have a special meeting on the 26th or the 27th, if necessary.
Okay.
So, you, we'll be determining which of these groups, and as many as we can get in.
Right.
Of course, elected officials will be invited to come in, too. So, we can do a work session probably on the 11th in the afternoon. I've marked the work session off for next week as being a work session with elected officials for
Oh, okay, good. So, March 4th would be with the elected officials.
The 11th.
And that'd be the afternoon?
The 11th.
Oh, so, we're not having anything on the 4th?
No, we have some other appointments.
Oh, okay. The 11th then, okay.
I then will have
The numbers.
The numbers, the budget requests, all the others together. So, on the 11th, we should be able to
Okay.
block out that afternoon for elected officials and budgeting.
Okay. And then, the 18th would be for others that we may
Yeah.
And I know there's several that we have gone over, and we're going to have some questions on it. Okay.
And if we have a, we could invite some of those next week, if you'd like to have any of those groups in on the 4th.
Okay.
Our last appointment is at 3:00, so I can put some in there at 3:00.
Well, I can tell you right now, I went to senior Montegaleans.
No, there are, I mean, I've made, I've made
Okay, well, why, wait, wait. Oh, okay, then let's wait till, yeah. I'll wait till we, we'll meet in this session. That makes more sense. Okay.
So, it's going to happen fast.
Do you want a motion on the public hearing to be set up?
Well, we can do that next week.
We're going to motion that.
Well, well, we're going to have to have one.
You'd rather have it on the 11th. Give us a little more time to finalize the budget, or you can do it on the 18th.
I'm going to do it on the 11th, so that way, in case we need a mod
I would move that we schedule a public hearing.
Okay.
On the 11th.
On the 11th, March.
Okay. I second. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed? Okay, I think that's, that gives us a week in case we know what
Okay, then I can advertise immediately
Exactly.
Next week, that'll give us a two weeks notice in the paper.
Okay. And I think that's fair, and that way, the public knows way ahead of time, and so they know the process.
It's a public hearing.
Yeah. And hopefully, by then, we'll also have the numbers. That's the problem right now. Please, we do not have the numbers yet from the state tax office and the council office, so it's difficult to try and, that's why we have to have a public hearing to set it up, just in case, once we see the numbers. Okay.
I have invited the Black Bears in Granville
Oh, great.
That meeting, that day at 10:30, but I think I'll try to move them up to 10:15 and have a hearing at 10:30.
Okay. Great. Okay. Is there anything else that anyone, okay, moved or adjourned? I need a motion. I can't.
I'd move we adjourn.
Second, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
You adjourned. Thank you.